I'll call the board to let me into order for April thirteenth. Oh, Bill Crossman, Donald Poole, myself, Pam Allen, Jake Thompson, Andy Doherty, town manager, and Elizabeth Bunker, deputy town clerk, Dickie Minnick. Uh, who agenda, any additions, attractions?
I think the, you haven't gotten the, um, minutes from the April sixth budget meeting. Yeah. You can just give it to me today if you don't have them yet. Not on the agenda, no, that's fine. And I, uh, not yet.
Okay, so we'll shift to March thirtieth. I will approve the agenda as amended, seconded by Pam Allen, all those in favor. Okay, so, onto the minutes, approve the minutes from the March thirtieth meeting. Our seconded, any discussion? All those in favor. Approve and sign treasures warrant number forty-one, so moved, seconded by Donald Poole, all those in favor. Seeing no communications, speakers from the floor.
Hi, Gabe McPhail, I'd like to be a speaker from the floor.
Right ahead.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, put out there, um, and remind, um, anybody listening, um, to take the twenty twenty-one broadband survey, um, whatever your feelings about broadband, um, and the proposal that's, um, out there, we, we just really need to hear from you, um, whether, whether you have a thumbs up or a thumbs down, it's just really important, and just get the word out, talk to people about it, um, we need at least four hundred respondents, and, um, we're, I think, at about a hundred and seventy-five now, so we have a little ways to go, but, um, just keep, keep, uh, spreading the word, thank you.
Is it really short, or did I miss something?
Yeah, it's only about three or four questions.
Okay, alright, I, I took it, and I was like, is that it? And I thought maybe I did something wrong, so all right, I'll move on.
Yeah, I can't urge people enough to take the survey, I have been, I've had people everywhere.
Took me about two minutes, and I thought I messed it up.
I, I agree.
Everywhere I'm going, people have talked me about it, one way or the other.
What's the deadline?
I don't think there's a hard deadline, but obviously the sooner the better.
Well, you guys wanna get something out in June, right, or May?
If they haven't everything done by the end of the month, and they could perform something in the first meeting in May, so. Sooner we get stuff out, sooner we can move forward.
It takes less than five minutes to do it, I mean, it takes less than, probably, I'm probably overestimating how long it took me, I just thought, I missed, I missed something, so, I mean, there's no reason, I mean, if someone couldn't find it, all you have to do is go to the town, I'll hit him with something, it's right there, I don't know how we get more people to dig in, though. Yeah.
Please fill it out.
There is some kind of a.
I'll put something on the wind next week, you heard it.
Yeah, there is a, there's a hundred dollar, there's a drawing for a hundred dollar cash prize, if you, if you send in your entry, or you do it online, you have the option of entering into the drawing, so, a little incentive, why not take the survey, possibly you could get a hundred bucks.
Thank you, Gabe, any other speakers on the floor?
Do they want more than one person per household taken?
I don't know. Yeah, I mean, if there is more than one, you have, one of you can fill out the paper one, and the other can do the online, if you want, or you can get another, a second paper one, is that true, Gabe?
Yep, there's, there, if anyone wants a paper one mailed to them, um, or you can pick one up at the town office, or call the town office and leave your, um, leave your address, we'll mail you one, if you have multiple members in the household, we're just really asking one survey per person, um, as opposed to one survey per household, we prefer there be, um, also, yeah, just one, um, entry, uh, to the contest per person, that would be preferable.
Also, all my entries are gonna get me in trouble.
That'll look suspicious, Pam, if you win.
Tucker, Logan, Henry. Okay, any other speakers on the floor? Okay, committee and department reports and appointments, animal control.
Jim provided you with a, um, summary of January, February, and March animal control work. Any questions on any of that?
Looks good to me.
Any other questions?
Hey, harbor master.
So, does he want us to take some kind of a position on this, what he's written on here? Kinda looks like it, right?
Which one?
The third bullet says waiting for future instruction from the town manager.
Yeah.
Is that something you want our guidance to, or are you just gonna take care of it?
I mean, we've sent a letter, unresponded, um, you know, absent, you know, and I think multiple people have talked to him about it, um, he just doesn't seem willing to, to move it, wanna move it, the ferry hasn't stopped running, as it's still there, but it does depend on the wind direction, what size boat down there at any point, um, I mean, I'm, I guess.
Is there, is there something in the, um, harbor ordinance about rental moorings, don't they have to be approved by the Army Corps of Engineers, or something like that, was that written there, did I remember, did that?
Uh, by the town, certainly, um, you know, there's also, I think, something in there about, generally in the laws about, you know, the need to, um, the failure to obey a direct order of the harbor master, the citation, and, um, you know, I think that, that what we were running into was, you know, what about the ferry service saying that needs to have a certain amount of footage, you know, at one point, they couldn't, they wouldn't give us the amount of footage they needed, so we could definitively say, um, and I think that they prefer to have at least a hundred feet, um, I think it was a hundred feet, outside the end of that pen.
I thought the harbor ma, uh, harbor master had, um, quite a bit of sway, and was recognized not as equal to the wardens, or whatever, but coast guard, or whoever does that, but obviously, but they, he still had, should have a certain amount of influence over the whole thing, right?
Yeah, my only understanding of what might be possible, um, you know, is a citation for failure to obey an order of a harbor master, um, potentially just the town paying to have it removed and trying to recoup the cost, um, obviously, that's what that might be, um, you know, I think in the ordinance, you'd probably find those two things probably exist, and I can't remember off the top of my head, but.
It would seem to me that, if, I mean, it's not a constant issue with the boat, with the ferry boat, but if it does disrupt service, a few times.
Anytime.
Or any time.
I mean, if it's just a rental morgue, does the state have any money, just to say, here, we'll give you X amount of money upfront, and then now we own this, aren't this, this space that's there, and then no one can put a morgue in there?
Not that I'm aware of, and they dumped it on us to deal with. Others, others have had to move their moorings at their cost, I mean, as a result of the project extension, you know, it wasn't notified beforehand when the project was being scoped or anything, it was just in the middle of, oh, that's gonna be a problem, they need to move their moorings, and they pointed out the ones that they felt needed to move, I think three of them have been moved.
What's the last one?
So, I'm looking at the morgue at the harbor, and it does say that rental moorings have to be approved by the Corps of Engineers, the rental morgue must have been approved by the harbor master in the original application.
Yeah, I'm, I'm guessing there is an original application to be counted for that morgue, and, but, I bet it could be easily proved that it's not, so, um, registered with the Army Corps of Engineers, so then it's an illegal morgue, so then.
Yeah, I mean, how many, how many times do you think either you or Jimmy have tried to contact him? Give a rough estimate.
I mean, just the two of us, I'm guessing at least three, and I think there was an effort at least once or twice from someone else, there are no people that have made contact with him, and talked with him.
Was there any certified mail, like any doc, hard document?
I sent a certified mail.
You have?
Yeah.
Send the one with the, part of the harbor ordinance that says rental moorings need to be, you know.
I would say.
The town's officially reached out at least three times, if it gets enough notice.
It's sufficient, yeah.
And the harbor master does have, uh, pretty exclusive authorities for.
And the moorings, if it's a rental morgue, and as he's obviously stated, then it's illegal, unless he can prove that it's been registered with the Army Corps of Engineers, right, so it's fair to move.
I'm at the point of, within the next fourteen days, try and make contact with it one more time, like, within the next day or two, when we're two weeks from the send date of that letter.
Right.
Uh, find out who's gonna, you know, that might be a problem, trying to find someone who's actually willing to move it, maybe not, but, you know, at least, to see if you can find someone to move it.
Yeah.
It's, you know, I think, we wanna work with people, but eventually, if they don't wanna work with us, we'll have to do it our way. Well. Any other, uh, so, yeah, and the float up on the turf there, that float has been there for years now, hasn't it, or am I just imagining it's been there that long?
Says it.
Where is it in relation to the, where is it in relation to the landing?
Um, well, okay, so if you, if you drive right to the end of the parking lot there, right by the ramp, you go over to your left, that little beach, it's not like, in, it's, I don't know whose property that is, I'm, I don't think it's, I don't, is that George Lewis's property, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I say we put the code enforcement off, um.
Well, it's a. I mean, it's the same thing, it's a matter of disposing of it, you know, in our ordinance, that was one of the things we had had, that was modified last summer, and the most recent approval, um, you know, the abandoned and derelict vessels in the year, equipment, um, you know, something like this especially, um, you know, it would lend itself to the removal at our, you know, we remove it, and then bill, and expect to pay it back.
Well, since it's, we know who the owner is, I would suggest you contact them.
It's been done multiple times over the last twelve months.
Okay, so.
Okay, well.
Who's in charge of that, the harbor master, or the, yeah?
Okay, well, the same thing goes down in cover cyber, one more letter, certified mail, fourteen days, we'll figure it out after that, gasoline, if it comes to it.
The harbor master has the authority to, uh, authorize its removal, if no one has responded satisfactorily.
Yeah, so I say give them one more notice of fourteen days, in both cases, certified mail, and, and you can even make a phone call as well, just in case they decide not to accept the certified mail, if that does happen. No, which is making, unless someone disagrees with that, course of action, okay.
So, back to the, uh, abandoned vehicles used in town war.
Yeah.
Um, I thought he did a great job last year cleaning everything up, so what, what's abandoned there now, I haven't really paid too much attention to it, I know in the wind.
I mean, I know every once in a while, there's a tractor trailer park, they were.
It's not abandoned.
That was just there overnight, usually.
There was one there for the good example, winter, it's not there anymore.
Okay.
Um, the boats that were there recently are gone, most, there's a couple there.
I mean, what are they allowed for eight hours if they haul their skip out to let it, you know, clean the bottom and dry out, I mean, they're allowed a minute at a time.
But I did notice in the wind that there had been some comment made to Jimmy about, um, cars parking on the, up on the grass, and why is it all right for them to be there, not people on the wharf, well, that's explained again in the ordinance, that that area where the grass is near the, um, West Main, is designated for parking by.
Permit.
But do we actually, did we ever give out permits, did anybody actually come to get permits?
I think that first year was an effective year, I don't think we did them last year.
So, let's, let's try to go back to that.
We probably need to put a sign up down there, and.
Permitted parking only?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
I want, I want to grow that, to make sure it's very clear.
Just, just, just in that.
Right.
In that grass area.
Yeah.
How many spots did you save?
Probably like a few, ten or twelve.
I think there's, at least twelve, yeah.
And, I mean, that is used pretty consistently by, um, Spectrum and.
Which is fine.
Consolidated.
I agree, if, if we're gonna, if you go back to giving out permits, you give out only twelve, if you don't have a permit, you can't.
You gotta, that's right.
But then if we don't give out twelve, and there's four empty spots, as long as someone, they're just parking there when they go to haul, and it's not there overnight, then it's not really easy to deal with.
That's, that's fine, if, if you're not over there overnight, then you're within those rules anyway, but if you're gonna park there overnight, you get a permit, that's, that's, that's the rule, wait, that's what we intend.
That's what, that's what I thought we intended, yeah.
And there's no charge for those permits, correct?
Right.
I'm talking ahead, I don't recall, it was in that ordinance.
I don't think we've really seen them that.
And we did, it was like thirty or fifty dollars a year, it wasn't, if we did, it wasn't, it wasn't astronomical, but I can't remember either.
We're not the main state ferry service.
Well, I don't think, I don't think that's necessarily important to charge, but a permit.
Right.
A free per, permit is not a bad idea.
That's what we put in the ordinance, so we try and enforce the ordinance, like, right?
You've got to limit the number of permits, not be more than twelve.
Okay, any other questions?
I think it's gonna be a good time for me to express my appreciation for everything that Jimmy has done, in his capacity as harbor master and animal control officer, and quite a marked difference between what was experienced in the past.
That's right, I agree with that.
I agree as well.
I agree.
Yeah, from the first year when I was on the skateboard, when there was none, or even that, yeah, or very minimal, it was definitely a huge improvement.
Yep.
Yeah, housing committee, Ellen is on, what she was on.
I know there was a, a request from them to find some of the work that they presented, um, in the, in the founding document, if you will, the mission that they, they set out to do, so in the next year, they wanna have a, conduct an assessment, be able to come up with recommendations to help alleviate some of the housing challenges, the work we're trying to work on, um, and there's a, a number available for a housing assessment, um, that they had a meeting on last night, and to talk a little bit more about the school work, um, the request is to have five thousand dollars allocated for the budget next year to help support that assessment work, um, and the recommendations that'll follow, Ellen, you wanna offer anything in addition?
Um, no, thank you, Andy, for filling in, um, we had a really good meeting last night, we were joined by, um, Jason Byrd, who is the, um, Director of Housing Development for Penguus, and Betsy Kong, who's a land use planning expert, and who was with HUD, and Mary Terry, who's worked for the Island Institute and Genesis, and done a lot of assessments, housing assessments for various islands in our area, and the next step for our committee is to do the assessment, find out who needs affordable housing, what affordable is in Vinyl Haven, the number of people, whether they're single people, whether they're families with children, and really get some, some concrete numbers, and then we can come up with, uh, hopefully, a host of different solutions to solve the various problems, but I guess I was under the impression that there was some money available, maybe leftover money from the budget from last year, and I reached out to Nick Batista at the Island Institute, this is something they're really interested in, I think they'll support us to some extent, and I hope there's some money available somewhere in the kitty now, because we really wanna go forward, Mary's available, we're having a meeting, um, in two weeks from yesterday, we're gonna figure out exactly what the components of the housing assessment will be, what the committee needs to do to gather information from people, and the best ways to gather it, and then hopefully, over the summer, Mary can put it all together. Also, Jason Byrd very kindly offered to, um, gather some data, which is very hard to get unless you have some sort of professional, I, I, I don't know, a connection, they apparently do them for every one of their projects, and there seemed to be a very nice connection between Mary and Jason, and his willingness to help, and he's very eager at seeing, Andy, you can, uh, see if you disagree with this assessment, he seemed very eager to, um, really do something on Vinyl Haven, which I thought was just so uplifting and exciting.
But, there isn't money available right now in any various line.
Um, not in the planning, or in the professional services line that I'm aware of, right, as of right now, and we still got, you know, two and a half months of this fiscal year to continue working towards what we already allocated, and I know, you don't usually build it with five thousand dollars of, um, flexibility, um, but I, I don't, I just don't see the challenge, the problem truly either, where, um, you know, waiting until the funds are available, July first, if approved, um, but that's gonna stop the process and, um, delay the timeline so significantly, that's not gonna, so be helpful.
Okay, good.
The capacity for committees to meet and conduct multiple meetings during the summer, we know is very minimal, um, but Mary would be able to help assist that process during the summer months while there's everyone out here, um, so I don't see where that would be prohibitive to the timeline that they had set out on.
No, we're, we're planning to have, um, a lot of the information for Mary, hopefully before the heat of summer, so she'll be able to do her work while we're all doing other things, and then we can reconvene in September, and look at all that information presented to you, um, maybe present it to the community, and figure out what the options are for going forward.
So, the request, um, from, uh, Nick Batista, for the five thousand dollars, is that, would that be what, to take care of your request for the five thousand dollars from the town?
Well, like, they can't, he's looking for a match, is.
Is that a match, or?
They can't guarantee right now, until everybody approves, that there will be, he's hopeful, I mean, he's advocating for there to be at least a portion of that amount available, um, but in the absence of getting that, if the committee work is to proceed, they need to be able to have, you know, my suggestion was to consider allocating it from fund balance for next year's budget, um, if, if it goes unused, because the grant funds, or whatever comes in from the institute, it just goes back to the fund balance, um, you know, but that, to me, would make the most sense, not knowing, not having a commitment from them right now.
So, what, what line would it be on, yeah, what might be running through?
It'd be, you know, probably the, either admin, this committee support work, or under the planning.
But we'll know about the ordinance to contribute, by the next meeting.
Oh, they have April.
That might be a little ambitious, I think, I think they're, I thought their process was in May, so at some point, they might know.
Nick told me he thought it would be, he'd know pretty much by the end of April, because he thought that twenty-five to five thousand dollars was pretty much a drop in the bucket for them.
Well, we've already gone through our admin budget, how about you put it in our planning, and we'll just, I mean, I certainly don't see a, I'm certainly in favor of it.
If we have, if we have this studied on, it's only gonna help us get grants in the future, and then, I mean.
Hopefully, I mean, just put it in.
Yeah, we haven't got the planning part of the budget, I think we should.
Yeah.
Try and add it in there, and take it for fund balance, like Andy said.
Yeah.
I don't think that'll be.
Yeah.
Any big issue.
Put the, put the request right there in the planning line, we'll discuss it next week on the Budget Oracle.
Is that good, Alan?
That's wonderful, thank you all so much for your support.
Thank you, Ellen.
Can't really allocate it now, I mean.
Yeah, Mary, Mary last had.
It's, it's almost at the end, it's right before the Knox County thing, or, yeah, right before.
Right before that service, I'm sorry. Okay, group commission reports.
Um, I may have forgotten to include those, um, they have started grading, the road postings are supposed to come off, and, once this next rainfall comes through, and the things are firming up pretty good in the road, the shoulders are still a little soft in places, but, uh, they do, and just say next week, removing those postings. Um, other than that, mostly just trying to transition out of, hopefully, fully out of winter mode, and I know they've unrigged some of the gear on the trucks, and trying to get that stuff, um, cleaned up, and ready to be put away, and, presumably, potentially move some of it up to the new site at some point this summer, um, unless we keep it down at Coots, or at the current location, um, that's mostly what we've been working on, some of them have been trying to use the vacation time, you know, now, instead of waiting until, you know, June, losing it all at the same time, so, some have been out here and there, but for the most part, just spring work.
Right.
When do we end up selling sand use, since it was, it seems like a mile of winter again? Yeah, and for us, mild sometimes means more ice, so we did, we did end up having to buy additional two hundred yards, not knowing, and that was in February, we were at the point where it was getting a little concerning, um, but I don't know how much, it was probably another, I'm guessing three hundred yards or so down there, I'm just guessing, I don't, I haven't asked any measures or not, but.
So, we use approximately nine hundred out of the thousand that we had originally budgeted for?
Yep. We ended up getting an extra three hundred that we still have.
No, we got an additional two hundred.
Two hundred, sorry. We have about three hundred left, that's gonna. I think, I mean, again, I didn't have anyone scale it, and try and get like, get ballpark ideas. But that'll be moved up to new site. Presumably. When it can be. Yeah. If it's not, if it's not put into there, sometimes we, we blend it with stone, and use it as gravel, road surface, depending on what we have available for road surface material, um, having the salt in there is kinda like having calcium chloride added, so it helps harden it right away without having to go over it later, um, it depends on what's available to us. But yes, it certainly could be moved up to a new building.
Old business, transfer station layout.
I'm trying to pull that up real quick and share that, um, is there any?
You stopped sharing, no, I never watch, sorry.
I did, yeah, I'm gonna grab, see if I can grab that real quick, and put that back up. Any questions or further discussion on any of, of that, they did, probably didn't share it, yeah? Um, an engineer did come back with, like, a ballpark idea of the, um, the difference, Jake had asked about the difference between making the changes in the layout, and just replacing the wall.
Just replacing the wall and paving, I believe, as well, right, paving it.
I would think so.
I, I would hope, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know if that was, I thought that was the original.
Well, yeah, I just wanted, like, if we just did what's up there, like, basically the bare minimum.
So, this was their, their opinion of cost for retaining wall.
Can we roll it up?
Yeah, retaining wall, concrete pads, I guess for the, the containers that are up there, um, so they're easy to move around, uh, pavement replacement, but not redesigning any layout, and changing the traffic flow, um, they're estimating that to be six hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred, um, and I believe.
Yeah, one of like, off the line.
Nine hundred and fifty, was that right?
Eight hundred?
Mm-hmm.
Eight hundred fifty?
Eight hundred, I think.
To do the layout changes and all that.
Not a huge difference, yeah.
About a hundred and seventy thousand ish.
If that's what it is.
Ish.
Ish.
Yeah.
Depending on the ish.
Time government, always ish.
I apologize, I should have had this up before.
I guess you should have.
I was just about to say that, yes.
It's a little hectic at the end of the week last week, with, I apologize.
Excuse this time.
Do we get, do we have to wait till we're back on camera to whip you?
I saw your center poll today, on the Island Resiliency, yeah.
So, the, when they first came back, came to us, it was eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, they estimated, to, that included the, the layout changes, um, again, the, what they came back with, not making those changes, was six hundred and thirty-six, so almost two hundred thousand dollars, about two hundred thousand dollars.
Where did the two hundred thousand come from? Where? All that, totally changing how you come in and go out, the.
No, no, like, I couldn't see the difference in the two. So, the, the main difference, so this is what they, after hearing input, and, and trying to improve the flow, which we think could help, help solve some of the challenges of trying to get every, every load, every bag that comes in, and trying to account for all that, is to have a more, a better, a better system coming in there, um, and so the, the proposal looked at entering in that lower gate, you know, in front of the burn pile, and then making an immediate left, um, along that fence that's there currently, um, and then, whether you drive in, or drive in the back end, either way, um, you know, having those containers lined up slightly different, changing the wall shape, um, so that you can see it fits those trailers a little bit better, you put more trailers along that area, right now, we've only got two, and then one, we usually want another extra one there, while And then one, we usually want another extra one there while it's swapping out. Um, this would allow for two spare containers, which I know is something that Kenny would like to have, the spare demo on hand, not just a spare. Compacted load, um. You know, so they, after hearing that, the need for the space and trying to improve the, the efficiency and the flow through there, that's what they had kinda come up with. Um, if only, the only thing you did was utilize and drop stuff up at these containers. Um, you can go right back out, um, where we're used to going in and out. Um, if you have something for the other, the demo or the, the metal or the brush pile. You know, you'd be able to go on the backside and, and go dump that down there. We do, need to create containment for those, for some of those items, I mean, you know. The standards for the transfer station, the burn pile needs to be kept smaller and it needs to be contained. Um, so we do, we should at a minimum, that's gonna be pretty minimal, I think, to do that, a lot of that we could probably do with just jersey barriers of some sort. Um. I think we're, I'm trying to think about trying to maybe buy some of the ones that are at Carrying Place Bridge, just keep them on the island instead of paying for them to leave the island. Um, so that was something that we were looking at, so without modifying that flow in the wall shape. Um, that's where you save the two hundred, roughly two hundred thousand dollars, I think.
I feel like it's something we should do, but it seems like a lot. Do you think that would be recapped? The higher fees people pay to.
Certainly could.
Like not losing, not, not that we raise the rate, I'm just saying like the amount of trash that goes in there, we'll get paid for, is that?
I think other things we could probably look at doing, like improving the gates so people can't actually access it off hours, after hours. Um, you know, there's been mornings after being closed for a couple of days that, you know, better part of that hopper for the single stream is full. There's time for the recycling load, although we don't charge for recycling, but it does show the activity that happens off hours. You know, when both hoppers are.
Well, it's pretty easy to get over that.
The, the staff rely on the trust of the people coming up to either write it down or come with trash stickers on, on the bags already. Um, you know, some do write it down, I've seen it, they do have records of it written down. Um, whether every, every bag, can't verify once it's in there, whether every bag's got a sticker on it. Um, it doesn't make it hard.
That kinda trust applies to a lot of what goes on up there. And it's, it's really, it's wonderful to think that so many of us would comply, but honestly. It's just no way to run a business and, and if people pay for everything that they dispose of up there. I'm sure, as Jake says, that we could recover costs quickly.
I mean, just improving the flow, it just seems like it would make sense and be safer to everyone, if everyone knows you're only coming in, there's one way and exiting another way. Cause that, that one in, entrance exit right now, it's. It's difficult to get in there if there's two vehicles trying to come out and sometimes you can't see until you pull out just enough.
Right. I really don't, it's only, I mean. Beyond the cost that, as we talked about earlier, that layout of the inability to back up into. The, I mean, I, I'm assuming that could be changed pretty easily.
Yeah, you could just turn the parking spaces the other, you know, the other way. The other way.
Right.
And you could drive past and then back.
Yeah.
And you needed to back up to it, you know, we did, we did relay back to the engineers that the, you know. This particular setup here probably or might not work well for the demo. Dump, because a lot of people do come up with full pickup trucks or dump trucks and need to be able to back up and right now. We know the way we have it set up does not really comply with what the insurance companies are expecting, that should be a gated or fenced area, so you can't fall into the dumpster. Um, we can't really have put anything in there at the moment, we, we tried, the, the brackets are there, but because the wall's in such bad shape. And the ground's in such bad shape, you can't truly get a good anchor and then you've gotta be able to move it every time someone comes in with a load. So that is something that we need to improve, but also take into consideration in the layout, making sure trucks can still. Really get back to dumpster to be able to dump a full load. Um, I think on the mainland, what you, you might see more of is people, if they've got a big construction project, they rent a dumpster and put it on site, we don't have that. Capability here, realistically, I know some have done it, but it's not a realistic thing.
So to the point though of people coming after, after hours, a lot of businesses do that. A lot of Main Street businesses and I know a lot of the waterfront businesses do that, because, you know, it's just. Sometimes it's just a convenient time to do it, and for that matter, this is, it's the time available to do it. They have people that come and haul their garbage for them and they.
Understandable, if it's the grocery store, the co-op, something like that, they're, they're not gonna go in there and not. You know, that's a whole different thing, I think what you're talking about more is individuals going in.
That you go up by there and there'll be a truck parked there, cause you can just jump over, I mean, it's just a.
I agree.
If we had a better gate on there.
I do it all the time.
I do, I do as well, but I also am honest about it.
But, I mean, and for a while I could drive in.
But yeah, we don't, I mean, but yeah, I mean.
Right, if we had an eight foot gate on there with a, with a padlock or, I don't know what's it, but however, then you'd be at all.
At the same time.
Then you could still, you could still. Have keys out there apparently for whatever people live at the grocery store, whatever you deem necessary. But that would definitely discourage a lot of people from walking in there and throwing their trash, no one's gonna throw their trash bag up over eight feet and then climb up over that and then go.
No, they'll throw it in the woods.
Probably.
And most of what's thrown away up there is thrown away during the daytime, why don't we just staff it more often?
Have it open more.
Yeah.
You could have it open more days for less hours, right now, it's, right now.
Everything was thrown away up there were paid for, we could recover, I think, a punishing amount of money.
I mean, right now it's four, ten hour days. Yeah, you could do, I mean, you know, you could have an eight to four or whatever. You could, we could change the schedule, it's been, it's been this schedule.
Forever.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, could go through the weekend, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah, could, yeah, could.
Oh, we, yeah, we could talk more about, you know, some of that, you know, so I've had other ideas that you probably talk about with, uh.
But also what about the bags that we talked about another, you know, last year or whenever it was? That, instead of stickers, you have colored, you know, like yellow bags for. What now is a white trash bag and. Orange bags for the green garbage bags, you know what I mean, that you'd have to buy. Either here at the town office or sell them in places and anything that goes in there that's not those colors, you know. You can see people throwing a white garbage bag, it's not, clearly it's not a town. Trash bag. To me, that would make.
All kinds of ways of improving efficiency and profitability.
Yeah.
Without going the route of changing the layout. No, I don't think that's totally separate, I was just asking Andy if he thought that by changing the. Layout that we would collect the extra money on people being able, so that was my original question and Andy thinks, well.
Back to the original point of. Are we interested in changing the layout?
Yes.
And then we can, then we can discuss whether or not. You know, how we're going to. But, you know, we can, but should we put into whichever, under capital projects, I'm assuming, you know?
Wish for thinking tab.
Well, no, I mean, is this something we wanna present at this town meeting, we, either way, we're going to present, we're going to present. No matter what, we're going to present hopefully the retaining wall and paving it, or do we want to. Entertain under the capital projects line, this full pro, you know, this larger project.
I, yeah, I mean, we have, we had a structural assessment done on that wall that's there now. Four or five years ago, you know, and they kinda put a number on it for when it needs, should be done, um, we're, we're at it.
How many years ago?
Um, you know, so it, again, it's, it's something that. We, we need to do, one, one way or the other, whether you choose to, you know. Re, reconfigure the layout, change the wall, or keep the wall largely the way it is and just build a wall in front of the wall or however they wanna do it. Um, you know, kinda keep it where it is.
What's the plan for when all this is ripped up and?
The, we haven't, I guess, come up with the plan for it yet, we've talked about needing to have a plan, if you go with just replacing the wall. That's there now and not changing the layout, obviously your time to do the project's not gonna be nearly as long. Um, but they, I think we were figuring it was gonna be upwards of two months potentially if you went with the reconfiguration, you have to come up with alternative ways. So one of the things we talked about was, you know, being able to put the trash, the trash, the compacted trash. Container over by the recycling container and the short-term solution to be able to still do those, that both compacted containers right there. We can come up with a way, we got to come up with a way to put the, the demo in another location, ideally up there somewhere. Um, a lot of the ash that wants treated to be used as part of the project. Um, you know, so is that happening and being moved, you know, we might be able to create, I mean, I think it's, we don't have the solution proposal to think about, but you do have to think about that. Um, as it'll take a little bit longer to do that full project.
So if the retaining wall and paving is done, how will that, will that interfere with the eventual. Completion of the redesigning?
Uh, well.
I mean, are we gonna spend six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to do those two things and then? Two hundred thousand dollars more, I mean.
No, cause that wall, you know, you see the wall on the screen, there's a big difference from just kinda what's there now, which is just, you know, one turn in it.
So we won't be able to.
Yeah.
Make it, make a decision for the next like fifteen, twenty years for the, you know. Now, now's your moment.
I know, it seems to me this is the more, it's more expensive, but it seems more logical choice, looking down the road.
I agree, it seems to make the most sense long-term, I, I don't like the price tag, but. If you have to do something to the wall, when to improve the layout while we're doing it, right?
And then take advantage of every opportunity to recover our burden.
Yes, increase the revenue from it.
I mean.
Seems to me that.
I'm saying now that the engineers are just giving us his plans, why don't we just cut them out and do it?
Who? This concept's a long way from construction designs, anything questions of builders in those.
Any money out there anywhere for grants on landfills or, I mean.
I mean, small stuff for operation to improve waste diversion, there's small things there, um, you know, it's, you know. Redoing a transfer station layout like this, there's not much, I mean, you might find something to cap a landfill or. Do something that way or reuse a land, cap landfill in a different way, um, but for what we're talking about.
Like I was kinda wondering, I saw some, something about some bill that they're pushing through, to, to use old landfills, put solar panels on, I don't know if there was a way to get. A bunch of money to do that, you know, piggyback on like, you know, some of this.
We're, we're open to applying for it if it exists, but we're not aware right now of.
Well, I mean, I don't think it exists yet, but that was like some proposal I saw.
Okay, so Gabe can maybe, um, between you and Gabe, you guys can check and dig a little deeper into possible grant money.
Yeah, like Andy said, as far as we know, you know, for actual what we're talking about doing, unless you're saying. Like this specific component, like maybe the compost area or, um, there's a component of. Recycling that's gonna be enhanced as a result of the, um, layout change, like waste, there is waste diversion grant money. But it's very small pools, it's like really no more than like forty thousand dollars, so, um, you know, nothing.
Better than nothing.
Yeah, yeah, so if there are components where, I mean, we will certainly look at all aspects of the project and, like you said, we'll. We'll look and see what, what we can, what we can address, yep.
What's required of us tonight in terms of a decision?
Um, so I mean, we, nothing's absolutely required tonight, um, just a continuing discussion. Um, if you, if it's gonna be on the town warrant for town meeting, we, we presumably do need to kinda have. A commitment from the board of the town on which of the two cost options we wanna pursue. Um, you wouldn't see it in the budget, cause there wouldn't be a payment due in this, in next year's budget process, but we wanna have an authorization to. Start the process of getting a more concrete cost estimate, putting out the bid, you know, having the approval to spend up to a certain amount.
I move we go ahead, I move we endorse, uh, further. Steps in pursuing this proposal.
This proposal you're saying will with the change in the layout?
Yeah.
Okay, Mike, that might, maybe should be a little more clear.
Well.
Reconfiguration.
You know, why don't we just, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna have our budget workshop.
Right.
And we're gonna be talking about capital projects next week, and we'll, when we look at final, I do look at numbers, how they're coming in. We'll just discuss, you know, we'll discuss the difference in what a debt service payment would look like on that. Couple hundred thousand dollars over, however many years we decide.
Yeah, I, I can try and find out what, you know, what that term time might be.
Another, that probably is gonna be a fifteen year bond again. Well, yeah, I don't know.
No, I agree, I think we should.
You know, two year, two year bond or something.
Let's get through the, let's get through.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's just go. So, on that note. Budget workshop, what everybody's been waiting for at home. So we. Stop after social security and Medicare. Which brings us to. Our CEO LPI. Can you just go, why don't we just go through CEO LPI license, accepted site and animal control, those are all pretty easy. Yeah, let's just get through those three tabs then, tonight and we'll have a real workshop.
Just one, should be just one page, it might have gotten a.
I don't have it either, but is it twenty-three hundred dollars still?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it licensed, accepted, accepted? No, I don't have it either, but okay, anyway. Yeah, alright.
Recall the goals, uh, continue to digitize the. Files, um, so we have a digital backup of those and. The pursuit of, uh, improving the GIS programs or capabilities. Some, the two things, a couple of things that, um, they had highlighted.
I mean, there isn't really anything too controversial on this one I've seen, you know, don't actually go on that.
Yeah, a while I was just going down, and it's just, I've spent time. Yeah, it's just one, it's not even time.
Yeah, with the time, uh, the way, just a matter of hours. The, um, last year, the board, you had talked about, um, trying to collect fifty, fifty percent of. Of the cost for the department through the permit fees, um. You know, whether that, if you wanna continue to maintain that similar type of benchmark, you know, we wouldn't presumably shouldn't or may not need to raise. The fees, but we'll keep an eye on, it's been a pretty busy winter and spring already for permits, so. We'll have a better idea and the, the fee structure for that is something that the board can modify.
Right.
I make a motion that we approve the CEO LPI budget of thirty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars.
I'll second that motion, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, license, licensed, accepted site, which is that twenty-three hundred dollars. Yeah, it's been the same forever, uh, I move we approve twenty-three hundred dollars for a licensed. Seconded by Pam Alley, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, animal control. A little bump on salary for that. A little bump on.
I make motion we approve that animal control budget at fifty-three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Just one question, sorry, year to date, we're only at six hundred dollars, who expect?
Yeah, that's paid quarterly, so when I printed out the year to date, which was for the first six months, December thirty-first. That, yeah, that's paid quarterly, so when I printed out the year to date, which for the first six months, December thirty-first, but that point, that warrant hadn't cleared that when I ran the report. So, yeah, that's a quarterly payout, um, so it was six hundred bucks and proposing to go to six twenty-five per quarter.
And then the service fees, is that quarterly payment, or is that just as, as he submits?
Um, so included in the service fees. There's some of those, yeah, so the Pope to Maine agreement, that's a quarterly payment.
Oh, yeah, agreed to that, for what, three years or four years, and we already agreed to that?
That's an amount that gets, yeah, that gets paid, the three hundred and seventy dollars is the, you know, that's the discretionary, discretionary money is that, you know. Would support other service fees that come off that, we don't, we're like, no.
Okay. I, I would second Jake's motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, let's, come on, go ahead, unless you guys have some.
No.
I desire to continue, as a reminder, the budget workshop next week, we decided we have five o'clock, not five thirty. Five o'clock Tuesday, the. April, whatever it is.
Four years.
Okay, great, I'll take your word for it. Report from town manager.
And I didn't have a chance to write anything at the end of last week, um, I did share an email, um, with a resignation. Carrie, our ambulance director has provided a two week notice, um, and has been offered and taken a job in another location. Um, so we're working through the, you know, the process now for interim phase. And we'll be going out at some point by the end of the week, um, probably tomorrow, um, with a posting for the position. Um, the, right now, the thought is to try and fill it as it, as it is, as a full-time position, so you see what, what type, what type of candidate. Supply, um, and see if any kind of fit the, what we're looking for, someone who would live here. Um, you know, going through that process doesn't yield what we're hoping for, then we'll reconvene and, and think about a different way to structure it. Um, it might be, it wasn't too long ago that we were doing, so there's still some ideas that, you know, we were talking about that might work, or we tried this and that, so. Working through that, um, and. There's been a follow-up on a couple land use issues, um, still pursuing the, um, the ADK action. Uh, did a site visit today, um, you know, and most of the, some of the stuff has had progress, um, but some of it still remains, so.
What action do you call it?
The ADK eight zero K action, a land use violation that takes, an action that goes to court.
Is that all of?
Yeah, I mean, that was the motion that was, that was approved by the board in February, uh, we'd sent a final notice of violation on the issues that were raised. Just giving a quick, you know, kind of a, you know, we are following up on that, we had issued a notice of violation, asked by the end of March to have things, um, resolved. Um, you know, I had met with the, the property owner at the end of March, I think it was April first or March, March thirty-first. Um, had, had kind of given the indication that we'll see how, you know, we'll see how things progress by today, um, or yesterday for. Anticipation for today's meeting, um, and then reminded that, you know, you guys had already authorized the, um, the endeavor to go forward with that action, so. Um, things still aren't fully resolved, you know, did have a good meeting, but we're still working towards that all, um. You know, so taking the direction of you, um, at that meeting in February, presumably we'll continue to pursue that because it hasn't been resolved a hundred percent. That's moving forward. Um, moratorium ordinance, you had asked me to look into that for the home occupation, um, I did ask MMA. Um, so it's not as simple as the board just issuing a moratorium, it would, they call it a moratorium ordinance. Um, so the moratorium would recall, would require a special town meeting vote. Um, they did recommend that because of the nature of moratoriums and what we were talking about, that probably should have legal counsel involved in drafting the. Or the moratorium ordinance, um, to make sure that, you know, it was a sound ordinance. Um, because of that, I was gonna bring it back to you to see if that's something you wanted to try and pursue, um, this fiscal year.
So either way, we're gonna have to have a special town meeting either to change the planning commission or what planning zoning laws. Land use order, sorry, or have a moratorium.
So it's on the planning commission's radar, you know, the, the reason it came up was while they are working on the proposed changes. You know, should we issue moratorium, so it's not just, it's cut and dry and simple as, as that, if this was a, a town charter and the authority was given to the select board. Um, it would have been likely that simple, but in this, in our case, it's not.
And you asked David how. How much, you know, time he thinks it would take him to do it, or, I mean.
I could. Seems like.
How much time to do what, develop a moratorium?
No, how much time that would take the lawyers to, you know, to draw it up, like, I mean, how much money, basically how much money it's gonna cost us to. Have him research and draw it up before we agree to anything, I mean, if it's gonna take him a couple days worth of work, that's quite a lot of money, but.
Your ordinance change or the moratorium?
The moratorium.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, the ordinance change, we, we can do that without him, can't we, I mean.
Right, yeah, I mean, you could.
I'm talking about the moratorium, if we have to run it by our lawyers, I think we should find out how long things.
I would just say, if the plant, planning board aware of the issue, so if they have more home use permits come up, they're gonna be a little more. I think, um, careful about proving them right out of the box, so I think if we can work with them to get the ordinance updated, we might not have to go that route. But I, I agree with Jake, wouldn't hurt to ask, see what kind of estimate it would be to, to have a moratorium drafted.
I mean, if it's gonna take him a couple hours to do it, then we could have a special town meeting.
Right, if it's gonna take him weeks, then yeah.
And maybe we should find out how long the planning commission's gonna have before they have their.
Yeah, I think that one, the planning commission.
It's gonna be June or July when they're ready to have a special town meeting to hold on, or if it's gonna be, you know, next December or next year, so.
In a couple weeks, right?
Yeah, we want to get this done.
Yeah, the challenge, the challenge of the, the, the land use ordinance, there are also a lot of other changes that have to happen because. The statutes are now outdated or other, other matters in the land use ordinance, they've been working on other sections of the land use ordinance. Um, from, for draft review, waiting for a public hearing to happen, um.
So there's no sense to that, too.
But the timing of it makes a difference in whether you want to include it as a separate piece and then come back in another couple months with another ordinance provision for the land use ordinance. Or whether you want to package it all together.
Well, I think we've got to brush fire right now, and we need to put, yeah, we have, we have a lot of other things to talk about, but the. Home occupation one is a immediate need, so if we have to have a special account meeting in the next few weeks or month. Like, I would be urging the planning commission to be working as much as they can, understand the volunteers, and they have busy schedules as well. But the sooner we can get this, this is, get this done, have a special town meeting, if it just has to be this one topic. And then we can come back on our other ordinances.
We can go through what they've already worked on, too, and change that and do the rest of it at a second one, if there's gonna be a lot of things, I mean, it might be easier to break it into. Two different, you know, there's no rule against doing that, is there?
No, it's a matter of the, you know, the community hosting the public hearing and then the town meeting.
We can figure that part out, that's.
Hopefully in the next, in the next, I'll bet it gets easy to have public meetings, right?
We have a, Ellen, um, would it be possible, do you think, for the planning commission? We have a select one's meeting of scheduled two weeks from today. If you could get the commission together and at the very least have an update to the home occupation issue. We can discuss it as a board two weeks from today and set a date for a public hearing sometime after that, does that sound like a? Is that too ambitious, or?
I don't think so, I mean, I think when we talked about it before, s- uh, some of you thought we should just take out that additional paragraph that says you can have a home occupation where you don't live. If we just, if we just took out that paragraph, I think it would go back to being a normal home occupation as indicated in the definitions. But I'm not the chair of the planning commission, Holly Salt is, so I, I feel a little uneasy speaking for her, but we have a meeting, um, Thursday. So, um, we, I think we could discuss it on Thursday, we also have a shoreline zoning issue that's been brought to us by Andy. Various forestry, um, possibilities within the shoreline zone, but if it's a priority for you, please, um. Forward that, Andy, forward that to Holly and say that, you know, this is priority one, home occupation, and that the select board wants, um. Want something in front of them for their next meeting.
I wish, I would, I think that'd be excellent if that could happen, I would say that's the brush wire right now.
We'll make it happen.
Fire later.
Agreed.
You know, there are other ordinances that you asked us to work on before that have never come up for a vote, the quarry ordinance, the aircraft landing ordinance, there could be several at this one town meeting.
If you can, if you can get, if you can get them all published up for that one meeting, then do it, if you can.
We had, we had them finished and we sent them to you and I think they were edited.
Oh.
I thought the quarry is a.
In the air?
Air helicopter one were pretty much a done deal, we were just waiting for the time when we could actually have a public hearing on. I thought that's how we left it last year, but I, I could be wrong.
Yeah, if you're having a public hearing anyways, you can just include them in there additionally again, and then, you know, put it together with the next special town vote.
Do you need to run any of these by the town attorney to make sure they're legal, legitimate, enforceable?
Um, I can go back and look at them, but I don't think we had had any immediate concern, I mean, we had modified them from other municipalities in Maine. Um, who've already created them, um, it didn't jump out as any issue, but if you do want to have the legal council review it, then I need your approval to do that. You know, so I think our budget for that is pretty close.
No, if, as long as there's nothing in there that we think is going to cause a problem, that's just.
I mean, the quarry ordinance is already in existence, we're just tweaking that a little bit.
Yeah.
And if we base new ordinances on existing municipalities that they created, then I think we're pretty safe, so.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Ellen.
Um, I just think I should tell you that I did have a conver, I had called Betsy Kong, um, because of the planning commission and the home, uh, occupation issue. I wanted her help, um, rewriting that ordinance because I understood she had a land use planning business years ago in California. And, um, she said that every ordinance change really should be run by an attorney, now that's her opinion. And I just thought I should pass that on to you since she has been an expert in this field.
I mean, we generally done just fine without, without challenges to the legality of our ordinances and. As long as we're not presenting anything that is.
The only new one that we've created is, um, the aircraft helicopter, that maybe that should.
I think we already did, I think we already did send it to the council at one point in time for a quick review.
Well, I'd have to look, I don't know.
I think you sent it to the MM.
I mean, I know I've listened to it a lot of ways now, but I can certainly go back and look and see what we may have asked.
Right, I mean, that, but if that budget is, that budget is very fine right now, and there's still some pretty significant work. Unfortunately.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed to down the road, I mean, legal review our ordinances, I don't think that's a bad idea, but I agree, at this point in time, I don't think.
Right.
We have to move forward, get anything updated. I, I don't think it's gonna land us in the.
Hopefully nobody comes buzzing in and a helicopter.
Exactly, I don't think we're in a, maybe, you know, we're not gonna be having a rescue land helicopter here.
Right.
I don't think that's gonna be initially.
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not. Hopefully not.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Hey, go on, ending, or is that the, your last item?
Um, that was the two, I think, I think I can recall the more pressing things that I had on my radar to do updates on.
Okay, reported members, I have a couple things, one now with, um. Carrie's resignation from the ambulance, as ambulance director, and first of all, we need to accept it, we need to accept the resignation. Do, do we have to, or is it just a, I mean, she's. Yeah, it's not, it's not up to us, okay, okay, I wanted to make sure, wanted to point to the new one, we didn't have to. Alright, never mind, but, uh, another issue, she is on the school board. Um, and obviously papers have closed, it goes on Friday for, uh, new nominations.
I thought that request come from the school before we go any further on that.
Okay, well, no, just, I just think we, we need to be aware of the fact that we're going to have to deal with that.
I mean, you don't, you know, if there's, there's some overlapping, she'll be here still for a little bit, so I will wait for that request to come from the school.
Okay, as long as she's, as long as she's still a resident, she can serve on the, as soon as she declared the residency elsewhere, she has to.
Presumably.
So there's two spots open and now there'll be a third.
Yes, yes. The other one, um, have we heard, have you heard anything, or I think you have actually, I missed the last EOC meeting, Fourth of July committee about. Having events in the parking lot for the Fourth of July.
They're requiring if there's a position or a decision yet, I, it seemed to me, come to me that there has been a decision and. I'm not aware of a board discussion and decision being made. But that's how it kind of came to me that the, someone from the committee had heard the decision has been made, I don't know who would have made it yet. And it's frankly, still too soon, other festivals and stuff in Maine that are much bigger have been canceled already, that happen annually. Um, the best advice I've given so far is there is guidance for large group gatherings and ticketed events, um, that they would fall under. Um, you know, I shared that with them, I said, best case scenario, you'd get further relaxed, worst case scenario, I guess it'd go the other way, but let's assume it doesn't. Um, and you'd have to somehow come up with a plan to be in compliance with that, I mean, the distancing is still expected, it's on town property. Um, you know, if they can kind of come up with a proposal that would, you know, address all of those guidelines, you know, certainly could be talked about, but. At this point, I'm not aware of any decisions to, you know, officially say yes or no to the event.
Are the fireworks still being planned for this year, did they get pushed from, I know, I remember seeing a contract the last February, or February. Twenty twenty, and I remember seeing they got pushed to this year, I mean, that's something that could still happen, I, I would assume.
They did at New Year's.
But that was just a private.
Yeah, it's an official town event, the difference with that is you, it's not, I mean, the parade, we know we've got hundreds of people that literally line Main Street. And there's just, there's no distancing, in the parking lot similarly, so if they can somehow come up with a plan that puts all of the guidelines, the check, yes, we're following these. Whereas the fireworks is a much more dispersed thing on private property and, you know, people gather elsewhere, um, you know, it's a very different type of. Event to happen, and as of now, my understanding is the contract's been signed and, um, with the dates, the rain date. And barring any significant changes, um, to the guidelines or rules, then presumably that'll go forward. Did you have any?
Oh, well, would, would you remind us, you know, very shortly, that restrictions are supposed to loosen up, is it May one or May thirty, is it beginning of May or end of May that?
I think. I think it's May first.
Like outdoor, outdoor gathering.
End of March, it went to seventy-five percent capacity for, but I mean, if you don't have a, a written capacity, I mean, how do you?
Well, again, so our town meeting, we're still gonna have, our town meeting, we're, if you're gonna hold it outside, we still have to prepare for. You know, what's the square footage we're hosting the event in, can people that are not in the same household still be six feet apart, it's still right now, the expectation that those outdoor events. Can happen, but there are still guidelines and two, two or three pages worth of guidelines that have to be followed. You know, thinking about things like where are the restrooms, mitigate and minimize the amount of people standing in line by providing more restroom. Um, is one of the things I remember sticking out, um, there's still a lot of things that you'd have to still do, I mean, you can't just. People would still be expected in a large group, still expected, I think, wear their mask at this point, in a large event.
And stay six feet apart if you're not in the same household.
I believe so.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't know if they changed that, I kept hearing something about.
Schools.
Changed it. Yeah, I know that applied.
I've shared the, with two of the members, shared those guidelines as of, as of the other day, um, so, again, if they have. Ways that they can at least be thinking about to comply with that, best case scenario gets a little easier. Um, we could do it, and with, with what's there today and how it has happened, I just don't see how it's possible to comply with the checklist, um, how we've had it. Doesn't mean they can't come up with another way.
Okay. So, um, that's all I had, I just.
So what about the Memorial Day parade, will that, you allow?
I mean, how it traditionally happens, um, it's the same thing, you gotta try and figure out, I mean, you're asking people essentially to gather for the parade and. You know, do, we'd have to essentially, by way of checklist, if it's something that's happening, make sure that those things can be, I mean, the, the big difference there is it is as simple as a parade. Um, and then the gathering for the readings, um, you know, whereas, there might be ways to try and figure out how to do that.
Presumably it could be tweaked that way.
I would think, certainly, um, and what about the, um, flagpole, has any. Progress been made on trying to find somebody to paint that?
I haven't, no, I haven't been able to.
I had some kids with some white paintballs, I guess.
I mean, I just want to make sure the base is, is sand, too, because it looks like it's.
I'll see if I can get Public Works to emphasize and help track something down. I haven't had the time to be able to focus in on that project.
Anything else? I'll throw you with your hand up before.
Yeah, did you, did you visit the contentious MEC three lot twenty with DP?
Not with DP. They haven't, they have not been able to get out and they didn't have a calendar to give us the date. Now that they can, they wanted to send photos, which I understand that happened. But beyond that, I don't have anything more definitive.
So the DEP wanted photos and they've got them.
Probably not.
And so now it's in their hands. Alright, um, have we decided who we're dedicating the time before too?
I think we did through email consensus.
Yeah, we did through email consensus as well.
Two constituents have approached me concerned about the lack of inspection stations and the likelihood that that would be a problem in the future. And uh, if you stop thinking about it, it could be a huge problem, particularly if the legislature doesn't pass. Laws. Not, no longer requiring inspections, which is possible, but not guaranteed. And if that means all the cars on Vinyl Haven, then these inspections have to go on the ferry. So, is there any uh. Sense in thinking about incentivizing. Prospects to create an automobile inspection station out here, I wonder.
How would you know about doing that?
I don't think that's something the town should.
Well.
I don't feel the town should go into that business.
Well, I wouldn't wanna go into that business. I'm talking about incentivizing a private individual to provide a service that's an absolute requirement. If Knox County continues to be saddled with the responsibility of citing everyone who doesn't have an inspected vehicle. And the prospect to put the model on the ferry is daunting. I think it's a perfectly reasonable thing for us to think about how we might make it possible or more likely that someone would create. That were established an inspection station over here.
Well, if there is soon to be.
When is that though?
When, oh, the, oh, I have no idea, but there is in the next, this summer, presumes, presumably. Going to be a garage that will be offering that service. Um, but yeah, that's, that's sometime this summer. I think that's still best case scenario.
Is there any way that we can. As a town, ask the state for a waiver for cars that are on Vinyl Haven for, you know. That they don't have to be inspected while they're on this side of the bay. I mean. I know it's a safety hazard, but you're not going on the highway eighty miles an hour on Vinyl Haven and is there anything that. Where there's, there's no one out here and, I mean, some people can't. I mean, they've made it cheap at twelve fifty, but when you have to pay thirty-one or what is the summer rate, thirty-seven dollars? I mean, it's pretty much fifty dollars. In a day's worth of time to go somewhere.
Just to.
I mean, is there, is there any thing that you can do like that?
I, I would not like to go that route because people already don't register, insure or inspect their vehicles.
Registered insurers is two totally different things.
But people don't do it out here. So if you're just gonna say, well, now you don't have to have it inspected either, like. I think people go back and forth to the bay lineup where you could plan it to get your vehicle inspected. Like, I don't get inspections out here and I've been able to keep mine up. Right? And I agree, there's supposed to be a garage here at some point where they will offer that service. I don't see why we have to try to find a solution to a problem that. I think will be solved relatively quickly. And enough people, like I said, go back and forth where. You can plan it out and you can get an inspection while you're away. That, that's my, that's my take on it.
So my, I think it's statute, I think it's in statute somewhere. I can't cite the place for it, but. Islands that don't have regular car ferry service, I think have kinda have an exception to the inspection rule.
Um. Peaks Island as well, still has an exception.
Islands that have car, regular car ferry service, I don't believe have an exception, even if they don't have an inspection station on the island.
Uh, Peaks Island, at least a few years ago, still had the exception.
Right, and I.
But, but their speed, they have, also have an island wide speed limit of twenty miles an hour.
But I don't know that they would, I, I think that. I'd reference, I'd have to go look at the statute, but I don't know that they have truly what they would consider an adequate regular car ferry service for that, for that.
Oh, I mean, their car ferry service is more than hours, is it? Oh, I mean, from six in the morning until six at night, you can get the car ferry and then it switches over to the passenger.
Guess I've only been on a freight vessel that didn't.
Yeah. Oh, no, they, their car service is better than ours.
I didn't know that they had the, that frequent car service.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I can look, I don't know if there's something in that. I, I, the only reason I wanted to distinction was the regular, maybe it's something else. I don't know if they had a similar challenge for quite a while. They didn't have an inspection station until a few years ago out there. Um. I don't think they had an exception. I can certainly find.
My vehicle is uninspected right now. It ran out the end of January.
As long as the vehicle's out here. I mean, Chad, the deputy, the president deputy, I mean, he is at a previous meeting is, was saying that he's, you know, while the vehicle's here, understanding the limitation of. You know, the fact that there isn't a station out here, hasn't been, you know, real game bus about writing tickets for failed inspections or past due inspections. If there's something else going on and, you know, we've given you a warning and, you know. You've gotta make an effort to try and schedule something, but I haven't heard him say that he's. You know, actually writing people up for, so in the first offense, but if there's other issues that are going on with the vehicle as well, then you have to guys.
Right. I just. This time of year, you should be able to schedule time to go to the mainland to get inspected. I realize it's a pain in the butt, but you can couple it with doing some other things while you're over there, like it's not. I get it, it was, you know, middle of the summer or fall, like that's gonna be very difficult for a lot of people to get away, but. And I know last year was a challenge because of pandemic and all, but still dealing with that, but I. I think we should have a solution here coming up soon with new garage, so hopefully that will.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it would seem, you look at your, generally look at those things and say, oh gee. In May, look at, you know, I know my inspection's gonna run out, maybe I should make a plan to. Get over, I think you have thirty days after the.
Yeah, they give you a grace period anyway, so.
Um, one other thing and that is that I got, I'm going to the mainland tomorrow. I'm gonna check on this myself, but. Somebody came off the boat this morning and came and looked me up to tell me that they are restricting the lot in Rockland. And answering questions. By saying, there are a lot of changes that are gonna be made here in the lineup procedure. But that's all I know. Tomorrow I expect.
What do you mean by restricting the law?
Huh?
Oh, restry, I thought you said restricting, okay, okay. I'm sorry.
So they're planning things and they're just gonna move ahead and not say anything.
I don't know. They promised not to do that? I don't know.
That's a question.
Has, has there been communication from management to the advisory board since, in the last few weeks, since the last meeting?
No. Oh, yeah, since the last meeting, but not in the last few weeks.
Okay. I was under the impression through a conversation with Mark that there were some changes they were going forward with, which had speed bumps. Um, putting personnel at the top of the ramp when the boats are loading and unloading. Um. I think there was another one. But they didn't, they didn't, at the time, he wasn't intending to go forward with the larger, more inconvenient changes that were proposed. That that was the start of a process that would engage the community with, here are sort of challenges we've identified that we have that are safety concerns or improvement needs. But let's have a conversation about how we get there.
And that's the impression I had too.
Okay.
But there's been no communication from them since then, how they're gonna set that up, right? And now they're restriping over Rockland, so.
Well, it's one thing to repaint lines if you're re, restriping, but if you're painting new stripes and new, new.
It was the answer to the question that the guy asked, that, that. Put me off, but I'll know more tomorrow. I'll let you know what I know.
Wow.
I know everything else.
Anything else, Senator, reported members?
I got something, but I thought you had. My thing is, um, there's a rally in Augusta in two weeks from tomorrow, a windmill thing. And there's been a request for me to. Have Andy go and speak on behalf of the town about how, you know, taking a bunch of the ocean for windmills probably wouldn't be a good thing for the island. And I know they wanted the town manager from Stoneington to be able to go and speak on their behalf, but she's older and. You know, she can't be around crowds and things like that. So people from down there heard about the letters that they wrote together and thought that. Would probably be a good thing, you know, to go and just, I mean, show our support for, I mean, there's supposed to be a big. They've got permits and it's supposed to be all by the book, so that has been brought to me to bring up for us to. Perhaps make Andy available to speak that morning in Augusta, which would be at ten o'clock. I think, I think they made it late enough so we could get off there, get up there for the speakers up there in front of the Capitol, or I can't remember words.
What day is it?
It's uh, two weeks from tomorrow, the twenty-eighth, I believe, unless it's been rescheduled and I haven't heard of it.
You didn't get it shared with me.
But that's what I, that's what I have as of now. I mean, they've had the permit for six weeks and. That's what I have. I was hoping that we could let Andy have the day off to go up there and. You know.
I'm certainly in favor of that. Andy's gonna do that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if Andy has the time, which I think maybe if he does a couple of weeks, he could maybe schedule it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worth a, a much larger discussion than just, you know, saying, let's go up and, and have a, a couple of minutes to speak at the rally. I think there's a lot. So when it first was presented to me a couple of weeks ago, you know, for me serving as a town manager to be going to speak at, at anything, right? We gotta, I have to understand, you know, what is it? Am I delivering a message of the board selection on behalf of the town and what is that? Or am I going to speak because I'm a town manager, you know, and I just need to make sure that my board present testimony as a legislator, legislative session? Am I going to speak just at a rally, you know, when you come talk, you know, we talked to Virginia. Um, I've talked to a lot of others involved in trying to understand more about the wind project and what, you know. To really understand what the issue is and what the purpose of the rally serves and to understand more and. Um, you know, part of, you know, I do have a couple of meetings that afternoon that I have to do. Um, so there might be a potential time issue there. Um. I'd like to see us spend more time talking about and, you know, educating ourselves on, on the project and the merits of what's going on. Um, I'm not, I don't think the rally to me seemed like it was a particular audience other than, you know, generally raising awareness to say, we, you know. From what I saw online, it was the, the biggest request is asking that the roadmap, so the state of Maine has set up its endeavor to create. An offshore energy roadmap, if you will, offshore wind roadmap. It's not complete yet, they're just starting a process of developing the roadmap. Um, it would, it would cover everything from who's gonna build them, where are they gonna go? How do we determine and have input on saying where do they get placed? Um, where do they come ashore? Um, it covers a lot of ground and they don't have all those answers yet and they're still building a roadmap, but they're just starting it this spring. They start building it. Um, the, the state, I think, triggered because they have the state. Um, have a lease site in federal waters to put up, I think, twelve arrays, up to twelve arrays. Um, and they're going through this very public process of how do we, as a state, talk about where the resource gets built and, and how do we bring it ashore?
How big is an array, you know?
Uh, bigger than the ones we got. Um, I can't recall how big they are, but there's.
I mean, that, is it an array, a certain number, a fixed number?
So, um, so if you think of an array as a turbine and they've got up to twelve that they're looking to be able to put in that research site. In federal waters. Um, you know, a lot of the feedback I've gotten is, you know, this, the, it's a big issue. Um, it has a big impact or could have a big impact on certain zones and where people fish. Um, but wasn't getting a lot of suggestion that there should be. Um, to be cautious about going and speaking at the rally on, on, to be clear on whose behalf or to say what exactly. Um, I think I'm trying to get, I have a meeting with someone from the governor's energy office for later this week to try and understand more about it. Sort of the, the process and how do, how do we make sure there's people at the table that should be, um, you know, and trying to make end ways there. Um, you know, this is the start of a process that the state set out. The other thing is, you know, if, if the federal government carves up and creates lease sites. And a private company comes in and has the ability to buy lease site out in the federal waters. There probably isn't a public, much of a public process. There's an environmental review, there's, there's a process they still have to go through, but very little say in a lot of that. And so it is a big issue. Um, I, I'm curious about where, how at the rally, you know, we're able to make substantial headway. And the time, my time better spent being able to try and get in, have these meetings and try and get us at those tables. Um.
Could you just keep us informed about what you learned from the energy representative?
Sure.
And maybe we can, if it becomes apparent that it would serve a purpose, we could decide.
Yeah. I sent you the link to the UMaine stuff, right? But I hadn't been aware until I started making those phone calls after I, you know, it was brought up to me and. Um, there's been a series of meetings about the Maine, Maine project and the research site. Um, that I wish we all knew more about as they were happening, those live meetings. Um, you can access all of the meetings now. All the information, there's been a lot going into it. Um, you know, I think some of the questions that need to be asked, you know, at some of these, these meetings that come up. Will be really important to have people from. The communities, you know, representing the town government, if this is a big issue for our community, representing the buying stations, you know, buyer association, the union. The, the others that are there. And I think that, I assume that they're all part of it, but I don't, they don't have that process fully laid out yet or presented yet, I don't think. It's a rough timeline, how to create that roadmap. Um, I'm still learning a lot about that and the best place to interject ourselves is the town government, um, where that, where that energy we spend.
So. I mean, I didn't think we were taking a position as a town. Per se, but like that we could just speak out to, you know. What, what we think should, or, you know, should be happening with the process. We don't have to go up there and say, you know. But I think we should have, you know, a lot of the people are gonna be up there that aren't gonna be as good a speaker or writer as you. Do the research and stuff like that, so, you know, like you just had a lot of good points in what you just said that I, that aren't gonna be brought up. That could be, you know, very helpful, like people need seats at the table and, you know, this roadmap and to get more information on. That's kind of the way I was looking at it, like the letters that he wrote about the whale thing were.
Also.
Pretty, pretty good and spot on. And I mean, there's a lot of issues at stake on the ocean already that, you know, that's kind of, I think that's why people.
Also, use a, a town manager speaking, you know, when it inevitably be covered by the media. And a town manager giving a polished. Uh, statement, you know, likely get more media attention, you know, and help further the cause, I would think as well.
I don't know that I'll garner more attention than Mr. Golden or some of the others that are slated to go there, but I understand what you're saying. I just, you know. Um, I know I gotta be careful in the, this is the professional position I serve in, in kind of the, the places in which.
That's kinda like why. Like the, like you know what, what you should say about all that stuff, like, I mean, most, I mean, Golden's probably has his position as a federal thing, but. I mean, there's also town and state implications. I mean, I know they have a ten-year buffer on them right now, but I mean.
State water.
Right, but you could talk about, you know. I mean, just. I mean, what you had about the whale stuff and the granite stuff, that was pretty good, I mean.
I mean, the commitment they want is like tomorrow to be able to kind of be on whether there's any, you know, it. Still be added after, I'm sure it's possible, but, you know, I'm not, I don't know that I'm prepared tomorrow to be able to commit, I don't know. You know, there's a lot of data and stuff that they're hoping that we can present on behalf of how it would affect our community and have the data to share that. If that's what they had asked for, I don't have it in my fingertips now and. Um, to try and dig it up, I mean, it'll take some time to try and find it. And it's not, that's not worthy, it's not that we won't get it, I'm just saying. Between now and then, with everything else going on, I just need to make sure I can, before committing to it, be able to do it.
I think it's certainly important that we let our voices be heard, uh, as it relates to windmills and waters where everybody's fishing. But I also think it would be easier for us to make a decision once we've heard what sort of input you get from the energy representative.
I can bring up if, if I can get, I should be able to have some more I can provide, the budget workshop next Tuesday, the quick piece if you want. Otherwise, you're not talking about meeting again until the week of the rally.
Or the day of, the day of. No. Oh, okay. Yeah, so the budget workshop then will ha, will not be strictly a budget workshop. We'll have to discuss. Yes, apparently, as if everyone's agreeing. And they haven't made much of a choice. And that way you give. And that way gives you a week of, you know, that you meet with these people and you know, also can get up some data and whatnot in the best of these times. And go from there. I know I don't sound very enthusiastic or optimistic.
So much that you don't know about it already, that they're plowing ahead with this one out there. And they're talking about doing twelve more after they put this one out there before they even know what effects of the first one are gonna be. It's not like they're gonna wait, you know, five years and study it. They're plowing ahead to try and do those other ones to tie in since they're already gonna have this cable up there, it looks pretty quick, like, so.
Who's in charge? The ferry service?
One here. Uh, D W.
I just had a question. Is there gonna be an exit interview with Carrie? How long has she been here?
Couple of years.
It has been two years? Okay, I felt like we're short in that.
She was here for a full year before COVID and then.
Yeah, she was interim for almost six months, I think, we had filled, I think in February, or eight, I think it was eighteen or nineteen.
Nineteen.
I just be curious to get her to take on the position and the challenges that she has and all that.
She'd probably be willing to do it next year. I mean, it doesn't have to be on the whole board.
No, 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 it doesn't have to. I was just curious if there's gonna be one. And then, uh, when is the town meeting this year? Do we schedule it yet?
It's not scheduled. The board said you wanted to wait till after school was out. My, my suggestion is just to plan to have it outside.
Yeah.
And if we happen to get inclement weather, you know, we can call, quickly call, someone could call for a motion to adjourn, or I think it was to adjourn and reconvene at another date as, as one of the motions. Um, but, you know, we typically look, I think, to hold it that, would, would be the week of the twenty-first.
I usually do it on Wednesday, Wednesday, or whatever.
And I thought that that's absolutely important, but yeah, it is.
So at least the third week of June.
Yeah.
I think the last day of school, both of you, I think.
It'll be eighteen.
Yeah, we, you know, in, in normal times, we do it after graduation.
Yeah, right. But the challenge of that is trying to get into the auditorium for our town.
Well, no, I know, I, I'm still saying do it outside, but we test that way, you know, that the school do it, and then we.
Is the school planning an outside graduation or?
I don't know.
Because if they were, and they were gonna have the seats already out in the field or something, then we could do it that day before, you know, if they already had the stuff out there.
I can ask, yeah.
If they're having, if they're having graduation on a Saturday outside and they can set things up on Thursday, we could just go on Thursday before that. I don't think, that's all I was saying, it might be easier. I mean, if they had chairs set up, we could just borrow this setup or something.
Yeah, we have a long way to go. We have to finish the budget before we set up. We have a tentative, tentative timeline that week, sometime that week. All right, anything else? I'm moving, Jerry. Seconded by Pam Alley. All with a favor? Thank you all for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.